President of the Tiverton Town Council with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
Counsel Lambert.
Present.
Counsel Roderick.
Present.
Counsel Ruda.
Present.
Counsel Durfee.
Here.
Counsel Boland.
Yeah.
Counsel Leonard.
Present.
Counsel Acosta.
Here.
All present.
Tonight's consent agenda consists of the approval of the minutes of the February 9, 2009 regular meeting, approval of the minutes from January 12, 2009 regular meeting, and approval of executive session minutes from February 9, 2009. Received the minutes from the following boards and commissions: Foglin Oversight Committee, School Committee, Historic Cemetery Committee, Planning Board, Baccarat Cemetery Commission, Harbor and Coastal Waters Management. Correspondence received and filed receipt from the Boland family in appreciation, received from Weaver's Cove Energy Monthly Status Report available online and in the clerk's office, received from Town of Barrowville Resolution in Support of Legislation Requiring Utilities Pay for Relocation of Infrastructure, and received from City of East Providence Resolution Supporting Necessary Municipal Tools Contained in FY 2009 Supplementary Budget Proposal. Approval of Tax Assessor Abatements.
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda as read.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? In unanimous. We have a public hearing in advertised. TLT LLC Harbor Ridge Subdivision Request Parking Ban Be Imposed on the South Side of Hayden Avenue From Utility Pole Number Three to Main Road Subject to Meeting All Legal Requirements requested by Attorney Leary. To be tested to be removed. Okay.
That's the request, Mr. President.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that the matter be removed from our agenda. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The Board of Licensing Commissioners, we have a request for former John Perry on Slay Corne South-Domit Request Approval For Renewal Of Private Detective License Subject To Meeting All Legal Requirements.
Make a motion that we approve the application. Meeting all legal requirements.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the renewal of the license. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? In unanimous. Narragansett Electric Company Doing Businesses National Grid Request Renewal Of Street Escavation License Late Renewal Subject To Meeting All Legal Requirements.
I would ask our Director of DPW if he had any objections to this.
I do not. I'll recommend it.
I would then make a motion that we approve their petition.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? In unanimous. Appointments and Resignations Art Counsel.
I'll make a motion that Susan McCarskey be appointed to the Art Council for the term ending, I believe, 6/30/09, according to our agenda.
I would second that motion.
A motion and a second for the appointment. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? In unanimous. Historical Preservation Advisory Board.
I'll make a motion that Stuart Hardy be appointed to the Historic Preservation Advisory Board. Second. For the term ending 6/30/2011. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? Seeing none? No discussion?
No.
Seeing none, all those in favor? Planning Board Administrative Officer. We have a recommendation from the Tiverton Planning Board.
I'll make a motion that Kate Michel be appointed as the administrative officer.
Second.
Okay, the discussion on this is, can we have an employee of the Personnel Board serve in that position? I mean, of the Planning Board. I believe Kate is the secretary to the...
Yes, the state law says that the administrative officer can be either a member of the board or a town employee. It specifically allows it to be any one of those roles.
Okay.
Do we have a prohibition in our charter, however, someone being an employee and holding an appointed position?
She's not an appointed, she's not a member of the board, as opposed to Noel, who is both a voting member of the board and administrative officer. She is staff to the board, and she will be, the administrative officer effectively functions in the staff position for the role of the board, anyway.
But my question was, is there anything in the charter that prohibits an employee from being or from holding an appointed office as well?
I don't think the administrative officer is an appointed officer in the sense that the charter is talking about. It's a state requirement that you have someone, for example, the state requires that we have a zoning enforcement officer. We happen to have appointed the same person who holds our building inspector posts as the zoning enforcement officer, Garrett Ames. He's not prohibited by anything in our charter from holding that. I think administrative officer is the same kind of position that zoning enforcement officer is, so there's nothing that prohibits it.
Because we do not allow an employee to serve on a board or commission.
That's correct.
And that would not be serving on the board.
That's right.
Well, I'm glad it's not illegal, because I think she's very well qualified. I would be a favorite.
No, no, I just want to make sure we get any legal hurdles out of the way before we create one, so. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? In unanimous.
Pointerboarder?
Yeah.
How do you like the beard on the town solicitor? Is this new?
Yes, it's new.
I think that's in preparation for the Lenten season, is it not?
Next is the, oh, the harbor master removed, it says removed for advertising.
The charter stipulates that he, that position should be hired the same way any employee of the town is hired, so I pulled it for more research.
Okay.
You may have to advertise. So is this a go-ahead to advertise, that is stipulated in the charter?
I make a motion that we advertise the position of harbor masters stated in the charter.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? In unanimous. Unfinished business Counsel O'Leon, you've established one of the major council rules.
In, just before the meeting, you were handed a summary, which our clerk and her staff put together, that after everybody had their vote, we ended up with the top six, which for those folks that don't have a copy, I'll read quickly. The first one, number one on the list, which means it got the most number one, so to speak. Support Economic Development Commission Work With Focus On North Main Road Revitalization And Industrial Park Development. Number two was establish guidelines for employee contracts. Number three, completion of comp plan approved by state and commence follow-up ordinance revision. Number four, make certain Bay Street contaminated area gets sewed through stimulus funding. Number five, control the budget and taxes, keep any tax increase well within the state mandated cap. And number six was work with all committees to create an effective budget. And from my standpoint, that's a pretty good list. There's a little bit of overlap in there, but I think that gives some pretty good general funds. I'm not sure what exactly established guidelines for employee contract means, so there's probably a need for a little bit more discussion about that.
I'm going to make a motion that we do our goal setting, or discussion of it, at a workshop. And because some of these things, I think, affect the budget, some of these things are time, or timeframes to do this, and what I'd like to suggest is that we have this discussion on the goals at our first workshop, our first scheduled workshop.
Is that a motion?
It is, it is a motion.
I'll second that motion.
I'll make a motion that we set these things down, and there may be some others that we can discuss, so I think the agenda item should be general goals.
What was the date you had for that workshop?
March 30th, that's the five.
We have a motion and a second to continue this discussion at a workshop scheduled for March 30th, and on the general discussion of our goals. We have a motion made and seconded. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Mr. Laughlin was not able to be with us tonight, because I believe he's in Portsmouth at a meeting, so. Guess a motion to continue this to our next meeting, because...
I make a motion to continue having President Laughlin at our next meeting.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Town Administrator Status Report on Fiscal Late Online State Aid Reductions.
As you can see by the memorandum that was issued with your packet, our goal was to be able to reach $527,646. We have gone through this budget over and over and over, and the first thing we need to mention is the fact that the town administrator, the town clerk, and the treasurer have already reduced their budgets by $43,500, which was transferred to the legal budget. So that took $43,000 out of consideration. Additionally, initially, we had anticipated $35,000 coming out of sand and salt accounts, but as we all know, this was a very difficult winter, and instead of being able to save $35,000, we had to supplement the budget. We also have some problems with the current budget that we have not yet addressed, and I think the most important is the fire department overtime account, which is an issue, it seems, every year. Other than that, we have been able to reduce the shortage to $219,930. We are on the school committee agenda tomorrow evening to ask the school committee for some type of help. I have a meeting tomorrow with the police union, with their business agent and president of the police union, the Teamsters, and AFSMI, to discuss what they can, what help they can offer us. The fire department could not make it tomorrow. I'm hopefully going to be able to schedule them for later in the week. You have a schedule attached that shows that reducing the municipal budget in the area of pension plan contribution, landfill cover, drainage and paving, and non-recurring expenses, we were able to reduce the outstanding amount of 527 by $269,000. And then by going into departmental budgets, we were able to save another $38,000, leaving us with the $219,000 shortage. With this, I would also ask that the council approve that the town administrator transfer the funds on these, on this schedule, out of those accounts into a reserve account within the budget to try to save the money.
I would request that you put that on our agenda with the account numbers.
Okay. The attached doesn't have the account numbers, you're correct.
I'm not seeing that we have the account numbers, so I think it would be better for us to have it.
You want to do that for the next meeting?
Please. We will make sure of getting it.
No problem.
It should be done by account numbers, so that it's recorded in our, on the despire accounts.
No problem. Anyone have any questions to the administrator on the state aid reduction plan?
The only concern I have is, and I know Mr. Gonsla is well aware of it, is that the clock is running, and the number of months available to trim costs are disappearing rapidly.
Understood.
Okay, moving on, request for council release carry forward funds from last fiscal year to current years. Arts Council.
So moved.
Second.
Under discussion, is the Arts Council got a project they're spending this money on?
Yes.
Oh, okay, because sometimes it's easier when they show us that, you know, we've held the carry forward funds and usually look to see where it's going to be spent, and the request just basically says release it into the current fiscal year.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, I believe they have spent most of it.
Okay, okay, so it's been spent. We have a motion and a second to release the carry forward funds into Cal. 11065690, in the amount of $1,639.69. Been motioned and seconded. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Against?
Town Administrator Tax Collector Request Council Approval Of The 10-Year Motor Vehicle And Personal Property Tax Abatement, I believe.
Yes. These are very old receivables that we've been unable to collect, and as a rule, once they reach this age, we abate them.
Can I ask a question about this? How diligent is our search for some of these names? Maybe Jerry, I could ask Jerry that.
I'm your host, Jerry, to answer that.
Yes. Is there some recognizable names on this list?
No, most of them are people who have left town, and usually they've gone to, the list has gone to the collection agency. If they can't find them, I don't know how we would.
Do you know what kind of a search they do?
No, I don't, not really.
Maybe sometime you would ask that question, or it's just, I realize these are sum large, but I, that would be useful to know.
Yeah, on the motor vehicles, the state, for a period of time, will stop them from registering a vehicle if they have unpaid taxes. Now, how is that reported to the state, so that those registrations?
It's reported to the registry of motor vehicles annually. I make a report in about October.
Okay.
And those people who are delinquent are blocked from registering, and we just had a situation a couple of months ago where a gentleman who had moved out of Rhode Island maybe 10 years ago, and moved back and tried to register his car and couldn't, because he was blocked for taxes from back in '95, '96, '97, something like that.
So some of these people, if they're on this list, would be blocked, but once we abate that tax?
No, once we abate the tax, if they end up coming back to Rhode Island and they can't register, and they have to come in and pay, we usually just reverse the abatement and we'll collect the money.
Oh, okay, okay, so there is a procedure to do that, even if we abate it?
Right.
That's good. I'll make a motion that these, the motor vehicle and personal property taxes presented to us by memorandum be abated.
I'll second that motion, and for purposes of everybody knowing, the grand total of rather an extensive list, all over 10 years old, was $26,228.07.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? In unanimous. Thank you. Okay, Town Administrator Request Council Approval Of The Tax Sale Charges For Property Purchase At Sale By Town At Tiverton.
We have the tax collector standing right there, she can explain that.
Okay, what happens is, at tax sale, if no one bids on the property, the town ends up with it, and therefore, all those fees that we charge for advertising and mail and title search are on those accounts. I'm requesting that we abate those, because when someone does come in and redeem that property, all the funds, the taxes, the interest, and all those fees are paid to the treasurer, and they go directly into the general fund. They don't come through the tax collection.
But doesn't the tax collector get an appropriation to pay for these costs?
Just for the, yeah, just for the ones that we have to pay for. We end up with a little bit of a balance in that account, because we collect from the people when we pay the bill, when the bills, the advertising, the title search, and mailing. But it's just to cover the portion of the town's property, the property that the town ends up with.
Okay, so what we're rebating?
We're taking those...
Is just the advertising, the fees that were placed
Right.
On that lien.
On the account.
This does not show us what the taxes were on those properties.
No, no, the taxes are still on there.
Okay.
And these properties are now held?
By the town.
By the town.
And these charges represent what, Jerry?
They represent the title search and mailing charges, because we send out certified letters to anyone who's ever had interest in the property, and the advertising in the newspaper if they were still on that long.
I'd make a motion that we abate the 2,000, the grand total of $2,660.87, which encompasses several properties. Again, these were taken over by the town.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I just have one. It is that we have some that are just from 2008.
Yes, well, that's the year of the tax sale, that's not the year of the taxes, because we don't have a tax sale unless they're three years delinquent.
My question is, why would we just, why would we abate 2008? Considering it's just...
Well, the 2008 tax sale was for property whose taxes were delinquent since the year 2006, so those are actually the 2006...
Fees.
Fees.
See, in other words, we're not doing this every year, this is accumulation of what we've acquired, because no one purchased at a tax sale for 2006, '07, and '08. Am I correct?
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
New Business Request Permission Advertise For The Summer Recreation Positions.
Mr. President, I think recreation is an important part of the function of the government, the municipal government. I would make a motion to approve the request. I'm sure there are funds in their current budget.
I would second that motion.
We have a motion and a second to allow permission to advertise for the recreation summer positions. Discussion?
Yes, I just have a question. I don't know if there's anyone here from recreation, but do we have sufficient funds to cover paying these positions for the summer?
Good evening, Gary Rose with Tiverton Recreation. Yes, we have sufficient funds in order to do that. It's just basically to advertise for our summer positions, summer help at recreation facilities that we have at Baccarat, and for the gymnastics program that we run in the summertime. Basically, it's just to advertise for those positions.
Gary, I think the question was well-taken. Have you been to the Budget Committee lately?
Actually, I've been waiting to hear from the Budget Committee, yes. I have not talked to them as of this time.
Well, you should be aware that they are proposing a 16.5% cut in all the municipal budgets.
I have heard that, yes.
Okay.
I believe that...
And you're taking that into consideration?
Well, I think, I was talking to Mr. Gonsla, and I think there, I will be speaking with them people shortly, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure you were aware.
Yes, thank you very much.
Well, there are fees for all of these programs, once they're instituted.
Right. We collect fees for each trial that registers in the recreation program. Yes.
I know. Okay, we have a motion, we have a motion and a second to allow permission to advertise for the summer positions. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? In unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Speaker Lucci from Department of Public Works to direct out a presentation of required DEM report by David Cabral, P.E. of ESS Group.
Thank you, Mr. President. Every year, we are required to report stormwater to... Oh, okay. Every year, we're required by DEM to formulate and submit a stormwater to report. This particular report is for 2008, and it's due March 10, 2009. I have with me today, as of last year, David Cabral. He is a registered professional engineer and prepares the report for us, and he's from ESS Group, and I'd like to turn it over to him for presentation.
Ladies and gentlemen, basically, in 2003, my employer, ESS Group, along with representatives in both DPW and Conservation Commission, wrote a stormwater management plan for the Town of Tiverton, and that was a requirement of the small MS4 regulations by the State of Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management. MS4 stands for Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. And basically, every year from 2004 to 2008 is an annual report that's required under the regulations, and so what you have in front of you is a draft for the year 2008. The only thing that's missing from the report is an Excel spreadsheet, which will, which will show all the Town of Tiverton storm outfalls. And basically, that Excel spreadsheet will have contained information such as the latitude and longitude of every single outfall, the size of the outfall, for example, 12-inch diameter circular concrete pipe, and also the condition of the stormwater outfall. That information is being requested by DEM this year. And also, the other thing missing from the report is a number of, number of illicit discharges identified by the Wastewater Management Commission, and I'm still waiting on those numbers from Mr. John Lindcourt, but I should have them by the end of the week.
What is it that we've accomplished in this year in our wastewater management that we were required to do, or what goals did we miss? that we were required to do, or what goals did we miss?
Well, there are six minimum control measures that the state outlines, and the six control measures are public education and outreach, public involvement and participation, illicit discharge detection and elimination, construction site stormwater runoff control, post-construction stormwater management and new development and redevelopment, and pollution prevention, good housekeeping, and municipal operations. The first control measure, public education and outreach, in that section, I went over some of the items that the town of Tiverton took care of. For example, on the town website, there are links to both EPA and RITM websites from the DPW page. Also, I believe that in the summer of '06, Tiverton middle school students did some stenciling of storm drains in the northern part of town. I think that the stencil read, "Do not dump." Also, another part of public education were our, the ongoing letters that the Wastewater Management Commission are sending to town residents regarding the required inspection of their septic systems. Second part, public involvement and participation. One of the requirements is to show the plan in a public meeting, which is why I'm here today. Number three, illicit discharge detection. Basically, the Wastewater Management Commission has a, I believe, a five-year plan to check every single septic system in the town, and they're doing it by watershed. I believe the Saconic Pond on the north end of town was the first watershed.
Stafford Pond.
Sorry. And then, the, the next two control measures, construction site stormwater runoff control, basically, that's accomplished by both the planning board and the TPW, doing daily inspections of any ongoing construction that's occurring in, in the town. And then finally, the pollution prevention and good housekeeping and municipal operations. Basically, industrial way property, it's DPW's operations, basically, there are requirements for keeping sand and salt undercover, cleaning out the oil water separated that's on, on that property, and other pollution prevention techniques.
Are we currently up to date with what we're supposed to be doing with Stormwater II?
There are a couple of things I'm working with our town solicitor and his assistant. There seems to be a couple of issues in which we have ordinances for, but it's not described in the ordinance, a regulatory method. In other words, in our ordinance, it says you can't do this, but it doesn't say if you do this, you'll be fined $100, or, or, you know, that's, I guess, what Andy is taking care of. Also, as mentioned in this, we will be completing the spreadsheet that is required with the latlon of all of our outfalls. Fortunately, if we locate them by latlon, we don't have to tag them. That's kind of a method that one wiped out the other, so we will have that done. And I think that's, that's about, oh, no, there's one other item that seems to be missing in our ordinances, and that's post-construction control. I've read through the ordinance in the sediment and erosion control, and I didn't notice it, and I think it's being researched more by our town solicitor and his assistant. But it seems to me there's an ordinance missing in which we go out after construction projects. You know, we review them during construction, but after construction, post-construction ordinance with regulatory control seems to be missing, so...
Is that for where we've required detention ponds and so forth for construction?
Yes, yeah, well, that, the, no, that's, yeah, that's through the planning process, stormwater control is regulated as far as the planning process. It's reviewed during construction, but this is post-construction, so like every year...
But I mean, is that going to cover that? In other words, where our planning board says that a retention pond needs to be part of the drainage on property, you know, who's going to maintain it and so forth after the construction is done and the properties are sold? Is that going to cover that?
No.
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 If you want...
Please.
Mr. President, if I may. We are looking at this, DEM has apparently sent out non-compliance letters based on last March's report. At the end of January, it got received...
It's for two, two years, '06 and '07.
Yeah, received in February, things that they were finding in non-compliance, and they seem to have found something for every town, they seem to have found some issues. One of the things is, as, this is delegated from EPA to DEM, and DEM, as usual, one part of DEM isn't even talking to the other part of DEM, but one of the things that they are looking for is that after construction, you're right, you've got a detention pond and so forth, there's supposed to be an association set up, a homeowners' association that is responsible for maintaining it, and then we, the town, are required to get from that association records of their inspection and also inspect it ourselves on a regular basis. And that's this post-construction enforcement thing which is missing, which we are working on, on putting something together. And I noticed in here, one of the things we talk about is the catch inspection, catch basins are inspected during the cleanouts and also during the mosquito abatement program, so that's a good way to combine the efficiency. That's what we're going to have to put together. There will be an ordinance. It will not be ready, obviously, by the first week in March, but we intend on sending a letter of report to DEM saying, this is all the stuff that we've done so far, and, you know, the ordinance is in the works. We'd hope to have that for public hearing by mid-April.
Okay, thank you.
Can I say that I, I threw half of this report. You should be commended for the job you've done here. If ever you want to see a Gestapo document, you want to take a look at this report. If you want to know who did what, when, why, if did it fail, why did it fail, you did a marvelous job. You make a good politician.
Thank you.
And it's okay to take your shoes off.
Do you want a vote from us to authorize the submission of the report?
Well, again, we have to put some more pieces together. You know, what, what David has put together is most of it. The rest of it, Council of Delfi includes this Excel spreadsheet that's going to go from one end of the table to the other, and stuff from our town solicitor also.
Will it be, will it be ready for a vote by us at our next meeting? Moment, no, the next, this has to be submitted, I thought, by March?
March, March 10th, yeah. So I guess we do, we do need a vote.
You do want to vote to...
I would like...
Maybe the vote should be phrased so that you're authorized, the town is authorized to submit the report with such additions and corrections, as may, in the discretion of the DPW director, after consultation with the town solicitor, deems appropriate.
Thank you.
Second.
Basically saying they can submit their report with the approval of the solicitor and the DPW director.
Can I just confirm, you do expect to have the location of all the outfalls mapped before the deadline, though?
Yes.
Yeah, that was actually done by another consulting firm in the summer, I believe, of '07, and that's data that's currently residing on a CD-ROM in, on Mr. Bellucci's office.
We were lucky to find that. I, I didn't know about it before because the reports submitted for the previous two years were just a eight and a half by 11, and they didn't include any of that information. So when I started the research, we found that Beta had done it in 2007, which saved us a tremendous amount of time, but we have to...
The last time you were here, you said that?
I was sweating bullets, to say the least.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Yes.
A motion made and seconded to allow for the submission of the report with the final amendments to be given by Mr. Bellucci and approved by the solicitor. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara Donnelly, Chair of the Board of Trustees for the Essex Library, present overview and scope of ongoing efforts to build a new library.
Okay, good evening. I'm Barbara Donnelly, the Chair of the Library Board of Trustees, and I'm here tonight with Phil Skyler and Dick Bixby, who are going to give you an update on our progress towards getting a new library for the town of Tiverton. Before they begin, though, I wanted to mention the fact that we have established a library foundation in order to accept donations for this project. And I have members of the foundation here this evening who I would like to introduce. And if they could come forward or stand up. There's Marjorie Humphrey, who is Chairman of the Foundation. We have Mary Hodgson, who is the Treasurer. We have members Jennifer Thoreau and Joseph Brum, and I am the Secretary. And this foundation has been set up, it has 501(c)(3) status, so that those people who are giving a donation will get a tax deduction, and we are ready to accept donations, $5, $5 million, we love that. And anyway, I'm going to leave it now to Phil and Dick to give the update.
I'm Phil Skyler. I live a block or so down the road from here. One of the reasons I live there, since I moved in about nine years ago, is that I could walk to the library. Somehow, I was shanghaied into helping move the library away from where I live, but I may not live that long, so we'll see. Dick Bixby's with me. We're both members of the Building Committee. We're where you have a big agenda and a lot of things to take care of, so we'll be as brief as possible. The reason we're here tonight is to bring the council up to date on our efforts to build a new public library. We looked at our notes preparing for this meeting, and we found that this is at least the fourth time we've briefed a council, successive councils, since early 2002. We're here tonight because we have some advances to report. As you may be aware, the existing facility, just down the road also, is historical, 1938 was when it was built. It's a beautiful stone structure, it sits in a beautiful spot, but it can't continue to function as a library sufficient for the town in the 21st century. Things are changing. It's a very small structure, smaller than many of the houses that have been built in town recently. It's on a small, difficult parcel of land, difficult in the sense that it goes up very steeply and it's mostly ledge, and it's inefficient to run as it stands. It fails to comply with federal and state standards, for instance, American Disabilities Act standards and so forth. We've looked very carefully at it, and as a number of you know from past discussions, it's been determined that it, that can't be upgraded, so we need to look elsewhere. The State of Rhode Island, Office of Library Services and Information Technology, or Information Services, has granted waivers in successive years for practically a decade now at least, or maybe more, because we've been moving ahead in the direction of building a new facility. And Dick is going to talk about the progress we've made. The point that I want to make now, and again, my apologies to some of you who have been here through previous briefings, is that if the town fails to continue to make progress on this project, we stand in danger of losing our accreditation. That sounds like, well, we don't have something to hang on the wall, but it's much more important because the negative consequences, which the handout we gave you detailed, would be essentially to make the library a, a building with no connection to the rest of the state, no interlibrary loan, and not even a catalog, because the state now on, does the online catalog. So we would, the town essentially would be without a library. The good news is that the state people that we've worked with want us to succeed in creating a new facility. And the state's policy, and a policy which we've been involved in and are in the queue, is to support nearly 50% of the cost of building a new library. Now, that's complicated, I don't want to get into it right now, so let me turn things over to Dick to talk about where we are today and where we will, are going in, certainly in the, in the short term.
Thank you, Phil. Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen, the state does reimburse operating costs and capital costs, but they have some stringent requirements. One of the requirements is that in proceeding towards the construction of a new library, we must develop a building plan. We have, without the use of taxpayers' money, hired a consultant about four years ago, actually, went through the demographics, census information, and provided us with a comprehensive library building plan. This plan details the size, 31,500 square feet. It details all of the facilities that would be used within it. It recommends that we have a minimum five-acre parcel. It stipulates that we have 126 parking spots, that we have meeting rooms with one that will handle 150 people in a theater-type situation. So with that in mind, we went out looking for land, and we've looked, many, many parcels, and, and last fall, closed on the purchase of two properties over in the Fliss-Fourcorners area, fronting on Boogamash Road and adjacent to the recreation field. If I... Okay. Yeah, you can see, across the top is Boogamash Road, down the right-hand side is Crandall Road, so the traffic light would be just above the top right corner. On the corner is Citizens Union Bank. Down on the left side is the present recreation field, which is going to be refurbished, and in the lower right-hand side, in, in green, is the Crandall Road Fire Station. The two properties on the left, abutting the recreation area, is approximately two acres. The large apostle to the right, abutting the bank, is about four acres. So we have just over six acres of land. You can see in brown, the footprint of the 31,000-square-foot library, and in about 85 parking spots ruled off. The black areas are overflow parking that's not paved. So that has been purchased, it's being held in a real estate trust, interest on, on a loan, a bridge loan, being paid by, again, not taxpayer money, but library endowment funds. You can see going down between the rec area and the library, a road. Today, that's a paper road, owned by the town, 50 foot wide, and we have been working with the Planning Board, the Recreation Commission, and Church Community Housing, which is the developer of the proposed Sandy Wood Arts Community, down below the page here. The Planning Board has granted approval for a road to be paved there with a narrow island down the middle, one lane going each way, and it will be shared between the recreation field, us, and Sandy Wood. We have started clearing along the wall, and within a week or two, you should see a sign going up that says, "Future home of the Tiverton Public Library." We have received funding to do some advanced work, and I'll turn it back to Phil to discuss that.
Any questions on the site at this point, since it's...
I have one question. What is that dark blue marge area?
This one?
Is that...
Wetland. It's a very small one, that I wouldn't have mistaken for a wetland, but the experts can look at the ferns and so forth and say...
It looks like a huge pond there.
No, no. There is a little, there's another little place right here with a bunch of boulders around it, that they call a special aquatic site. It's not quite a wetland, but we probably would leave that. The whole idea, I don't want to get into the details, but the whole idea that we're approaching this is, is to leave as much as possible in its natural state. That's part of the whole idea of making efficient use of the site, and, and green, and carbon footprint, and the rest of it. But that's what, that's what these are. Not big enough to be a swimming pool, actually. You walk around...
I could tell if it was another building or something.
No, no, no. The only building that we're looking at is, is the brown one. And of course, this is just the architect's idea of what might be over in the recreation... And of course, this is just the architect's idea of what might be over in the recreation area. We're not planning the recreation areas. I'm sure Jack and the others know. That's their thing. The other piece that we want to talk about tonight is funding. One of the advantages that a library has in terms of being built within a town is, unlike the idea of, say, building a new town hall, we can go out and we can go to foundations and get money, which we've already done and want to continue to do, and we can also involve ourselves in a major fundraising effort to help defray the costs as far as the town is concerned. We've received a $5,000 grant from the Newport County Fund for a study in advance of the building, which is the way it should be done, about the possibilities to make it the most efficient building and the word that goes around, the greenest building that it can be, at the cost which we can, which we can find acceptable. We put that out to bid, and Robinson Green and Beretta was the architecture firm selected to do it for us. They've completed that work. We actually have it on a PowerPoint presentation, and they came up with, they did some very good work. One of the things that's happening right now is that a lot of the technology is becoming much more mature and much more affordable. In fact, often on a par with doing things in the conventional manner. We also have received a grant from the Rhode Island Foundation for $31,500, which is, will be spent on preliminary engineering that we need to do on-site, very preliminary, but also schematic design. We're putting out requests for proposals to a number of firms to do schematic design. That doesn't give you the final product. The architects, architectural firm that would be employed to do the final part comes a step later, but these would, this would give us a much better idea of what can go there, what our options are. And most importantly, probably, schematic design is it gives us something that we can show to people. Right now, in the past, we had nothing to show. Now we have a woods. We'd like to show people a little bit more than that, especially if you're going, if someone who might be on a foundation that would support you, or someone, a private citizen, who might want to support the library. So we're moving with the monies from that strategy grant from the Rhode Island Foundation. And the second piece that we're pursuing right now is a feasibility study, which we've been told by the Rhode Island Foundation is the first thing that has to happen before we can go back for significant additional funds from them. Feasibility study to understand what basis we have for a capital campaign, what we could expect, what the area's resources might support, and so forth. So that's where we are right now. We're actively supporting some additional grants, other sources of revenue, so we can continue to move forward. But that's essentially where we are. We're really acutely aware, as anybody that's paying any attention at all, of the difficulties the town's in as far as financial situation. It's just a smaller piece of the situation we're in as a country, it seems like, right now. We're prepared to pursue this at a pace that matches the town's ability to support it. What we essentially need is the continued support of the town, and most specifically for the town councils. We have gotten solid support from, actually, the encouragement of a council at the very beginning in about 2001 to go ahead with this, and successive councils have continued to support us. So we wanted to come here tonight to let you know where we are and to hope that that support will continue. So we thank you for the opportunity. If you have any questions on what we've covered right now? Dan, thank you for giving us...
I went to the presentation on the...
Yes, you did.
...building, and I'll tell you, it was very impressive.
Yeah, they did a nice job.
If they can deliver everything that they said, it's going to be an unbelievable building. But I think the people in town need to know what the total cost anticipation is for that building.
Well, you know, every year it's more. We've got some old paperwork that we did, which is probably fairly good ballpark figures from five years ago, and the ballpark figures right now are almost twice as much. I hate to, I hate to say a number, because whatever number I say will be what's etched in people's memory. And if we're four years further down the road, who knows? We may need to bring in a whole Chinese construction crew or something rather than do it by that time. Fly 'em in. I don't, you know, so, Ed, I can't give you a good number. It's several millions of dollars, that's for sure, to build a building of that type. Remembering that, assuming the state doesn't go out of business in the meantime, that the state's system has money in it to support a fairly big chunk of that cost. I know I sort of warmed around that.
I don't want to put you under pressure there. I understand.
And I guess a major reason for this next schematic design phase is it will give us a much better handle on projected costs.
All right. But we've been chasing. I mean, construction per square foot, you know, has just moved crazily. Maybe it'll come back down. Who knows? Maybe fish can fly.
I thank you for your time.
Well, thank you for giving us time.
...for this council.
Thank you.
And it's always a pleasure to see you. Don't think of it as an imposition. You know, at least it lets people who've been around on the council know that there is progress being made, and we appreciate seeing the updates.
Thank you, Dan. We'll leave this on site here for a bit in case people would like to... Next order of business, Louis Ledoux and Attorney Leary, request council approval of public improvements on Meadow Woods subdivision, Phase Two, Ledoux Lane extension.
Mr. President, members of the council, I think this is pretty straightforward. What the, the planning board has voted to do and submitted a memorandum to the town council is, there are two items short in completing the improvements to a standpoint of final acceptance. One is the, the catch basins are a little deeper than Mr. Berlucci wants them to be, and we're going to fill the bottoms of the catch basins and bring them up to a level that's satisfactory to him. That actually can't be done, apparently, until the spring. And the second item is the as-built drawings, which our engineer, Bill Smith, keeps telling us every moment, are going to be completed two minutes later, but I think they're pretty close to being completed. So what the, what the planning board voted to do is not give us any money back to hold a $75,000 surety, which is obviously way more than is necessary to complete those two items, but request, rather than keep this thing stagnating, request that the, that the town council accept the improvements. Is Mr. Berlucci still here? There he is.
Are you satisfied, Mr. Berlucci?
I'm quite satisfied.
This is probably an item for the planning board, not the town council, but you're going to be using concrete to raise the level of the bottom of those catch basins. What is there now, natural material, and why isn't that kind of...
Well, the catch basins are there now are like 15 feet deep, and they, they present a problem with our catch basin cleaning, that we can't reach down that far. And there's no reason to have a sump, which is the area below the pipe to the bottom, that, that deep. So I suggested, and the planning board approved, and I'd be quite satisfied, we're going to fill it up with about four feet of concrete on the bottom. But there is concrete on the bottom now, but we just can't reach the bottom, wouldn't be able to clean it.
And what is the rest, natural, dirt?
No, no, it's a concrete structure, but it's just 15 feet deep.
Well, the recommendation of the planning board, I will make a motion that the...
To accept the improvements.
Yes, accept the Meadow Woods Phase Two public improvements. With the second addition.
I will second that motion.
We have a motion to accept, for town acceptance of Meadow Woods Phase Two public improvements, subject to the planning board restrictions. Been seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Is that unanimous?
Yes.
Unanimous. Thank you.
Okay. Let me turn the page.
Attorney Leary, representing Stonebridge Fire District and North Tiverton Fire District, requests council approval of resolution in support of General Assembly enacting legislation to codify boundaries.
Mr. President, if I may, members of the council, I represent Stonebridge Fire District. As the literature that I've given you indicates, the Stonebridge Fire District and the North Tiverton Fire District have submitted acts through Representative Jay Edwards to the General Assembly. What these do really is redefine and tie down permanently the boundaries of the two districts. You have copies of the acts, which are basically, I think, because of the description, unreadable, but they do relate to the plan which the town administrator suggested strongly that I give you, and that's with it. And you also have a resolution that I prepared indicating what I respectfully request, anyway, that the town council vote in endorsement. The reason we're here is not, these are independent entities and are not part of the town government, but, but I think some of you, anyway, know that if you get up in the legislature, this is referred to a committee of the legislature, which all bills are, they won't act on it without an indication, at least, that the local council is not opposed to it. So that's, that's the purpose of the resolution. Now, I can go on about the Stonebridge Fire District and the North Tiverton Fire District till about 3:00 a.m., but I'll be happy to answer any questions if you want the history of this. God help you, but go ahead.
Some of us do understand the history.
Yes, I think so.
You do not have in your bag at the end the higher of each of the act. Just have a few of the top pages with a copy of the map.
I think what's important to the council is that you understand that we have letters from both North Tiverton and from Stonebridge in support of the act, so, and we're really being asked to pass this simple resolution. It is resolved by the Town Council of Tiverton, Rhode Island, as follows. The Town Council endorses passage of two acts submitted or to be submitted to the Rhode Island General Assembly and respectively entitled an act relating to the Stonebridge Fire District and an act relating to North Tiverton Fire District. The opposite of the acts are attached to this resolution. In a brief history, we had three water districts. We had a TWA. TWA dissolved during its tenure. Parts of the district that they serviced were then being serviced by North Tiverton's parts, but being serviced by Stonebridge. Stonebridge and Tiverton, over a four- or five-year period, have finally got to the point of resolving who should have what in those jurisdictions. Therefore, this is to codify those resolutions and for once decide who has the watering rights to what areas in the town of Tiverton.
That's exactly correct, Mr. President.
There's a shorthand version.
That's right. It would have taken me two hours to say that sentence.
No, Mr. Leary, this is not on our subject, but those two districts should be merged. It is crazy to have two separate water districts in this town. That issue is not before us, but you're here.
Get it off your chest.
Just crazy.
Mr. President...
That would be nice, yes.
I have a question. We have in the materials a proposed map of the Stonebridge District, of the perimeter.
That's right.
But we don't have one for North Tiverton.
Because North Tiverton, North Tiverton then would have the watering rights to the remainder of the town.
Is that, what is the entire town?
That's correct.
Including theoretically south of Stonebridge?
That's correct. That's correct. Only, only the area shown on that map is going to be Stonebridge. All the rest...
Belongs to North Tiverton.
Belongs to North Tiverton.
And is that in the act somewhere?
Yeah, what the act says is...
We have an abbreviated...
The legal description doesn't really, you'd have to go through that whole legal description to figure out what it was.
What the act says, Consul McDuffie, is that, is that this is the Stonebridge Fire District, and it describes what's on that map.
Yep.
Then it says, everything else that isn't the Stonebridge Fire District is the North Tiverton Fire District.
What's the difference between the dotted line and the solid black line?
On the, on the map?
Yeah, on the print, yep.
That's, that's, that's the line, that's the theoretical line in, in the water, Consul McCarth.
Well, that's sort of float, in the water.
It's actually, it's just the surveyor's freible. It's meaningless. We stop at the water, the salt water.
Well, I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution in the form presented to us.
Can I ask a question? John Cudiero, 19th Ave Lane. And this act expand, would this expand the, the North Tiverton Water Authority's authority to tax or charge services to any portion of the town that they are not currently taxing? For instance, the theoretical area south of the Stonebridge, Stonebridge's current area.
I believe that currently it's within so many feet of a waterline.
So they would have new, new area?
No, they have the right to water, the rest of the town. If you don't currently have water where you are...
Right.
Then you're not going to be taxed because North Tiverton has the district. You have to be within so many feet, I believe in the act, of, of the waterline.
But, but I think this would give them the authority. If they brought water to South Tiverton, then they would have the authority to tax you as well.
Would they be allowed to do that currently with this amendment to an area that is in no need of their water?
If I could, Mr. President, this act has nothing to do with the taxing power. They already...
Have the taxing power.
They do. As the president explained, when the TWA was essentially conveyed by the town to North Tiverton, North Tiverton already has the whole, the whole town, except for the Stonebridge District. All this is trying to codify is exactly where the Stonebridge Fire District boundaries are, so that then everybody knows the rest belongs to North Tiverton.
Okay. This isn't a green light for them to start laying pipe?
They're not doing taxes.
They're not needed.
No, 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 no. First of all, they're in the same position. They don't have a green light to put a water pipe anywhere for the same reason nobody else, money. This, this is really to resolve, this is really to resolve a couple of disputes because a waterline went through property that was in one district, but wasn't serviced by that district, and it was to resolve those issues.
Correct.
That's all that this resolution is for. North Tiverton has the watering rights to the remainder of town when they took over the assets of the TWA.
That is correct.
That was TWA's right. We have a motion and a second.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution, as I read. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. A Recreation Committee, Commission.
You guys got a little one, I got a big one. Good evening.
Good evening.
There, we're here tonight to tell you some, a brief description of what we've been working on for almost a year now. We've been in conversations with a group in town that is looking to donate land to the town, to the town recreation in the vicinity of just over six acres of land, at no cost to us. And we are looking at developing a soccer complex on this land. Now, you say, why a soccer complex and not why something else? Well, the town is very fortunate that we've had, you know, many sporting groups in town that have enjoyed some good success. And part of the problem we have is getting all these groups on the same bits of land. So, you know, a lot of our problem is that baseball and soccer are all trying to use the same properties. So we're trying to eliminate that property, which will make it easy to take care of the property, you know, and, you know, many things. So, you know, again, we said soccer's easier, we're just going to have it level, have grass grow on it, and we don't have to worry about putting infield's in and this, that, and the rest. So we said, well, we've moved soccer, we've had discussions with the soccer group. They're looking forward to this. And basically, what I'm, what I'm looking for the council tonight is to give... And basically, what I'm looking for the council tonight is to give the Recreation Commission the authority to go forward and finalize all the details that we need to do this. Now, you have before you a proposal of what we expect it's going to cost us to do this. And we are looking at doing this in stages as we raise the money. So it's not like, you know, you're going to say, yes, go forward, and I'm going to come back tomorrow and say, oh, by the way, I need money. No, we're not going to do that. We're going to raise the money ourselves, and we'll do this staged out over the next year and a half to two years or so, and as we get the money, we'll go forward and develop the area. Fire away.
Well, when I read this.
Yes.
I was, and this is not necessarily, but it does go to the expense of the town on the Bogomarsh Field, because the last time you were here, you addressed Bogomarsh, and that was going to be done, we had a concept plan.
We still do, and we are still going forward on Bogomarsh. You know, it's, you know, I don't know what.
Okay, my question. There's a $27,000 grant, which is sitting at DEM, and we have a June deadline.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
It'll be gone. It'll be used this year.
This year? But will it be used by, I mean, have you had communication with DEM on this?
Not recently. I know Jim has had.
We talked to DEM about two to three months ago.
Yes, and who'd you talk to?
Well, I forget the gentleman's name.
Ray Dias.
Was it Ray Dias? No, Joe Dias.
Joe Dias.
Joe Dias.
Yeah, Joe Dias.
Because there is an existing letter saying that we wanted an extension until June. But I'm looking at Bogomarsh and going, what is happening there? And you're coming to us and saying, we have a new project.
Yeah.
Now, how much have you raised? You had a projected fundraising for Bogomarsh of $800,000.
Yep.
How much has been raised?
Well, we're still waiting for the state grants to grow, to open up, but on the opposite end, we're up to about $85,000.
And that is in a restricted account?
Including part of the grants that we've got and some of the monies we have. Yes, they are in restricted accounts.
And how much is in the restricted account? Do we have the treasurer here?
I'm not 100% sure. I know that also includes the money that the skate park people have raised also. You know, we've been in conversation with them. That money will be turned in.
Okay, the skate park is for the skate park?
Yes.
Okay. The 27 is for a basketball court?
That's correct.
Okay. And what plans do you have on that? For this, you said this year this will be done?
Parts of the park will be done this year. We'll be starting.
My question is, are we in danger of losing that grant that we've had for a couple of years?
I don't believe so. We know about the term, that when it expires, and we anticipate using it up this spring.
We plan on, when the weather breaks and we get a little nicer weather, I mean, we were going to start this in the fall, and then we had a freeze, and it just didn't make sense for us to start digging something up, just to leave it dug up. So what we do have a plan in place of some things that we want to try to start to do to begin to get the project rolling and use some of the matching funds that we have. This particular project that Jack's been working on so diligently is an opportunity very seldom does someone come to you and want to give you land for free.
Now, is this the Stonebridge Fire District?
Yes.
Yes.
I mean, that's common knowledge. This is not a secret, is it?
No.
Okay, so let's get that out in the open. Stonebridge is offered to give this to the town.
There are a couple of stipulations on it.
Okay, now, you say in your proposal that you expect soccer grants. Are you looking?
In conversations I've had with Tiverton Youth Soccer, there are grants that they can apply for, for the development of fields.
From where?
I am not 100% sure. I do know they are talking state and national grants that they can and will be applying for once, you know, once we have title to the land.
Well, you know, Jack, you talk about state grants.
I'm not counting much on state grants. You know, it's.
Yeah, and they don't even have an opening yet for, I mean, they've just are working on the open space grants, never mind going out for recreation grants with another bond issue. We agreed on that?
Yes, we are.
And those would be, you have identified state grants as, yeah, $50,000. Right?
Yes.
But, that's anybody's, I mean, that's not even a gleam in their eye at this point. Okay.
Mr. President, are there stipulations? Would this?
Yes, there are. Couple of, couple of things is I would have to have the area surveyed, which is, again, you know, that's no big thing. We are exploring, we're looking at having it surveyed and having complete architectural drawings done. We're already exploring ways of raising money to do that right now.
You're talking 1,500 bucks, basically, by your sheet to accomplish that.
Yeah, see, one of the things we want to be able to do when we put the soccer complexes is we want to be able to rotate the fields. There are certain areas on a soccer field that get choned up every year, you know, destroyed basically around the goal mouth. And if we can turn the fields and rotate them every year, then we'll, we don't totally destroy an area, you know? So that's one of the things we've got to work with the architect on how that's done.
There is no doubt that the town needs some additional land for recreational purposes, and it's nice to see, you know, any organization willing to donate a piece of land. The problem is, is budgets are, as you well know, as everybody else who are under tight constraints. It looks to me that in order to at least get this thing started is, if you reach the agreement with Stonebridge with the stipulations of, and I have no, I don't think there's any problem with it, rather than use it for recreation, it reverts back to that. I mean, that's, you know, the impervious surface issue, I don't know what they mean by the least amount.
They don't want to pay.
I can understand them. I mean, the least amount. You've got to do some, I guess, to get in and out. But we're really looking at, to get this thing started, it's $500, which is the land survey, which is the only other part of the stipulation that the land would have to be surveyed before it's turned over.
And that, you have a price on the land survey at 500?
1,500. No, 500.
Well, you have land survey 500.
We've got the survey in. We've been in conversations with an individual that.
Could donate it?
Well, we're working on that too.
Richard Bush, Tiverton Youth Soccer, President of Tiverton Youth Soccer, also on the RECT Committee. I don't mean to interrupt, but I know some of the finance issues are a problem. The thing about the survey, we have a couple gentlemen, several engineers in town and in Little Compton that are willing to donate services and kind services, so it would be no cost to the town at all. We're not looking for money to put this soccer complex in place. And the thing about financing, we also are under charter for Youth Soccer Association and the State Association, and they're both willing to help us find the funding to back this complex up without using public money. And they're very, very, they're very, very supportive. They'll do whatever it takes. There are private funds out there. There are, to promote the sport of soccer, there's a number of grants that Nike puts out and other corporations like that, that they set aside X amount of millions of dollars, and they want to see complexes and stuff like this up in town, in different towns and towns like ours. So that's basically our goal. But in order for them to help us achieve the financing, we need a piece of property to put a field on. Without that piece of property, we get no commitments. So that's, it's kind of, we don't want to put the cart in front of the horse and go ask for money, and they say, well, where's your complex? And we don't have it yet, and they're not going to give us financing. So if anybody else would like to ask me a question.
Well, I have a question.
Sure.
Okay. Are you saying that, have you seen these preliminary?
Yes.
Okay. And are you amending this by saying that you're in a position to represent that this would not be supported by public funds?
I have no problem at all initially telling you that there'll be zero monies used by the town to get this off the ground. I believe down the long run, and anybody would, I guess, could agree that there are going to be a cost with maintaining the property, but they absolutely could be absorbed by, you know, running tournaments or having town sponsored programs like we do with the rec and like we do with the beaches. They get the money, you guys get the money back that we put into it. So I don't see, I don't see this actually costing the town any money whatsoever. That's our whole goal, is not to cost the town any money whatsoever.
That's not what's here, of course.
Right. Well, I did, in defense, Mr. Cook, he's been working his butt off on it, and I think he wanted to have things in front of you to show what the actual cost would be, but not necessarily the cost to the town.
If the land's available and the survey can be done through an in-kind donation, I really don't see a problem, at least moving forward. We really need to identify additional space. I agree with Mr. Cook. We're trying to use the same space to accomplish multiple jobs. We run into complications every year at Pecassett with soccer and baseball. If the land's available and we can at least get it into the town ownership through this survey for uses recreation, I don't see any stipulation in here, and I have to see what Stonebridge put as to how long you would have to develop and so forth and so on. But I really see this as a start to eliminate some of our long-range, you know, problems that we're going to have with recreation in town, and we're going to need the recreation in town. So I know I could support, you know, if they're going to be able to get this surveyed and turned over to the town, I think we can look at some of these funding issues as we go. I think we have to take the first step.
I'm not certain I would quarrel with that, but I got to tell you, I am very concerned about taking on something that always ends up costing money. This is a presentation, but I remember the $800,000 that you were going to raise for Bogomarsh.
We're still working on that. We haven't given up.
I understand that, but it's been a couple of years.
And not the best economic times to go out and raise money.
Absolutely, and we're not going to have the best economic times as we roll forward.
Yeah.
Okay, we're probably looking at a two- or three-year period. I have to plan that things will probably not change. As a concept, it's fine, but I'd like to see much more realistic goals with regard to where the money is and where it will come from. And you haven't been before the Budget Committee either yet, okay?
I understand that.
All right. But I can tell you that their goal is to reduce everything. And not to be aware of that is a misstep.
Oh, I've sat through a couple and watched a few on TV, so.
Yes, I'm sure. It's an experience everybody in the town should have.
I think it's kind of unique here. We're really not asking for any money here. I mean, if you look at Jack's proposal, I think we laid some things out. I mean, we've been in contact, I mean, Rick has been in contact with people here that some of these funds are real. These are real funds that are available through different foundations and whatnot. You know, essentially, what we're trying to do here is, again, we have someone who's willing to donate some money to the land. Everything kind of has to fall into place in order for us to apply for these funds and to make these, get these monies moving. But I think that we're asking to take the baby step here to get it started so that we can begin to move forward.
Well, we just heard from Mr. Bush, we just appointed you, right?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, by the way.
We just heard from you that no public funds will be needed, you know, as, yes. So that's in the minutes, so.
That's fine, that's why we're here.
I think we need to clarify that, is to start this project.
Yes.
I see, you know, I see this, I'm going to let Mr. Leonard have a say, but I see this thing is unfolding in that manner. Believe it or not, I think that for what has to be done, to put soccer fields there, is the minimal amount in terms of what we've got to do to complete his project. You know, you don't need concession stands to the tune of $150,000 or $200,000.
Not to start.
I mean, the league, the league can do what they do up in North Tiverton and have portageons, you know, to use the site. So I mean, some of these funds, and there are going to be people who are involved in soccer and so forth, even when it comes to some of the land clearing and things like this, some of this is going to get to be accomplished with little or no funds. And I think that, I think we're getting back to that kind of a situation, and we're going to see more and more people, you know, being able to donate a little time and a little equipment to get things done, realizing how bad the situation is to keep some of our programs going.
Kids need a place to play.
So I can see this as being able to at least move forward without money. And I'm going to be the first ones to tell them, if you come here and tell me you need a dime, I'm going to laugh at you and send you on your way, because that's how tight the budgets are, you know? We don't have dollars, we're playing with pennies. I mean, we don't have pennies to give away, so.
One of my questions is, from the donor's standpoint, you know, I think would be a good opportunity to start the process by getting a survey done, but is there any stipulation from the donor that after the survey is completed, there has to be, you know, think of the word, substantial progress or some such?
I will double check on that.
Within so many years, because I could see where they might start to get a little bit uneasy if we said, okay, go ahead, you all got the survey done, and then five years later, nothing was happening. Their perspective might change. So I think that's a loose end.
I will discuss that with them.
That's got to be tied down for both parties, you know, because that lets them know what to expect, and that gives the organization a timeframe.
I totally agree with you. I also know a lot of people involved in some of the youth organizations in town that are chomping at the bit to get started on this. I wish I could get them to help with other things. But at the moment, their kids are involved in soccer, so they're willing to help with that, but they're.
People being people, we tend to procrastinate. The other thing that I think it's important that we all talk about is if the town gets involved, or not if, but when, when we start talking about mowing expenses and fertilizer and so forth, $3,000 to $4,000 annually, $1,000 annually, let's not kid ourselves. The way inflation's going to go, those costs are going to be much higher.
It's like anything else, by the time that comes around, you know, the process of bidding the town, the jobs out will be in place, so. I just tried to come up with estimates of what I'm looking at, you know, we're talking, I'm saying roughly maybe two years down the road, you're looking at, you know, I'd be asking for increases in the rec budget for this amount to cover that.
And as long as we know that two, three years down the road, that that's going to be, that's fine. But I think the number one thing is to set that timeframe. How long do you really have to get things?
I will verify with.
Because I want to emphasize what Ms. Durphy said, you know, we've got the Bogomarsh thing that has been circulating.
And there are a few other, there are, there are a few other things going on with that which will become evident in the near future.
You only have limited resources. I'd like to see Bogomarsh move, I'd like to get this one going, but keep Bogomarsh moving.
That's our intention.
Because it would be a terrible thing to lose $27,000.
Jim's first question was, is are we biting off more than we can chew?
I looked at him and said, yes. Right now, we are.
I think you need to get, I think you need to get a couple of things and bring it back to us, and that is, you know, some kind of in writing what the transfer of the land would, what they would require, and if they do have a timeframe. I mean, I'm sure they understand our position also. I think if you can get a little more specific on that and to show that with the survey, which you guys think you can get accomplished, that this land can be transferred to the town for this purpose, you know, I think we're willing to sit here and talk to you. But you've got to bring us, you know, the concept is here, and I don't think there's anybody who's not going to support the concept, especially when there's, you know, no money coming, you know, at this time from the town. We're not going to get too many opportunities like this, but bring us back what we need and what the timeframe is.
Basically, what I, I've had conversations not only with that group, but with others as far as even longer ranges, I've had discussions with the school department about tying into the septic system up at the new school. That's a possibility. Again, it's, I tried to have all these conversations ahead of time before I come to you, so they could say, you know, we are looking at all of it, but it's all long range.
The key here that I think the council's looking for is, we understand the use, you know, as long as the land's going to be used for the recreation and so forth, but we just want to make sure that they're not putting a timetable on you to say that we're going to transfer the land, you do the survey, we transfer the land. Are they going to say to you, you have a two-year or three-year period to complete the fields or to complete one field?
I will find out.
That's what we want to know. If we have, if we have some latitude in how long this project's going to take, I mean, I think we're going to see progress right away. I really do believe that soccer has enough of a following in this town, and there's enough people involved that, you know, they'll be able to cut a field up there.
Roughly 600.
They'll be able to, I mean, I see it, I see, I see the nightmare at Pecassett, you know.
That's not a nightmare, that's fun.
No, no, I mean, they're just not at all marketing and everything else. The actual. The actual use of that area and every square foot of that area.
I believe they call that, put 10 pounds of potatoes in a five-pound bag.
Yeah, and then, you know.
And it's, you know, I don't want to add to this because we have a very long agenda and a very long executive session, but we have got to see some progress on Bogomars.
Well, we'll see something in the spring, right?
You will see something in the spring.
And you know what? It would be helpful to have a report from you to Mr. Goncalo.
Okay.
There you go.
And with regard to Bogomars.
Okay, Mr. President.
And some towns.
I just want to make sure that, that we're asking for them to come back with something in writing.
Yeah.
Yeah, regarding, you know, what the stipulations are.
Yes, now that, now that you're telling me to do this, I will go forth and get all that stuff done legally.
Do you know, do you know how far you are from the pond? How far that land is from the drinking? They're probably going to prohibit you from using fertilizer because they.
They have, um.
They have talked about that.
We'll discuss that with them.
Yeah.
I think once we get the survey done and we know exactly where the land is, I think all of those answers will be.
Well, I think your plan to rotate the fields is going to solve that problem. You probably won't need fertilizer, you're just cutting the grass is all you'll have to do up there, I would hope.
It's one of the things that we want to look at doing.
I think what we were, the reason we came before you tonight was to begin the process so we could start this. Obviously, I'm sure that you have some questions, I have some questions, we all have questions. But we, we have a, a donor here that's willing to donate land, and we just need to begin the, the first step so that we can move forward.
Now, one last perhaps question. On the soccer pitch, do you have the same elevation and gradations that you do on a football field?
It's similar, drainage is similar, everything's similar, but the, the impact, the environmental impact's almost nil.
But it, but that, getting that, those proper crown.
Right, I see what you're saying, right.
Seems to be a lot more expensive than I ever dreamed.
Right, as long as the ball will roll, we're pretty, pretty easy to get along with.
It's not a professional soccer organization, and they don't have to, I mean, trust me, they're not, you see where they play over at Pecassett and pot up on the top of the hill, it looks like some of the fields are kicking a ball uphill, so, I mean, crowns are not the, at least they won't have sewer caps in the middle of their fields.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
All right, thank you.
Council Leonard requests website status report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The first thing I want to do is just give a brief background about why I brought this up. Couple reasons. The, I was at the Economic Development Commission meeting earlier this month, and that was the first time the topic came up. Actually, that was the second time the topic came up about how to get things on the website, what's the procedure, and so on and so forth. I've also heard that the Budget Committee wants to put some things on. And I know that the Treasurer has put things, like the audit of the financial statements. And then I note in the minutes from the Harbor Commission that they had some concerns. So I took a look at the website last time, just before I came to the meeting, and the Harbor Commission still seems to be not quite up to date. And I know the general processes and there's an attachment that talks about the general procedures. But, you know, three, I think there's three to four hours of work per month. And I guess my, my, I have two general questions. First off, is three to four hours a month enough to support the concept outlined in this G7 attachment? And then secondly, we currently, if I understand right, run everything through the administrator. And I guess some issue arises for parts of the town that are independently elected.
Can we hold that down in the back a little bit? We're having trouble hearing up here.
For those people that are independently elected, in other words, the Treasurer, the Budget Committee, the Clerk, should they have to run their material through the And as, as current things show, sometimes there's a little bit of contention among groups. So I've heard enough from enough different categories that I thought that we needed to have some level of discussion about that, and perhaps Mr. Tice could think about how appropriate is it for the town administrator, for example, to be telling Madam Clerk what she can or cannot put on the website, just as an example, no, no accusations.
Does that ever happen? No, it never, no, but I can, I could see some clearing house that you'd, otherwise, nothing would be, prevent me from running to the webmaster and running up a bill for the town.
I don't have any trouble with the clearing, that's, that's just proof.
If I may interject, I think most websites have what they call a gatekeeper.
I, I understand that.
And I think Mr. Goncalo acts as the gatekeeper for the town website.
Yeah, and my question beyond that is, Mr. Goncalo acts, but is it appropriate when we have in the charter separation of bodies, is it appropriate to have Mr. Goncalo, and no disrespect to him, as a gatekeeper for other elected bodies or other elected people or other elected offices? Because that's clearly something that if you read the charter, there's certainly some clear separation of power. Not accusing anybody of anything, but I think the Internet is more and more important in communication, and I think that's going to be an issue. And I would, I'd prefer to be ahead of the issue so we can talk about it now before it becomes an issue. And so I raise those questions, and if we would like, in the interest of time, to continue this to a different time when our agenda isn't so long, that would be perfectly acceptable.
I, I think it'd be appropriate to put this at that workshop we're going to have on the 30th.
Yeah.
You know, with, with the goats. I mean, because that's going to give us an opportunity to discuss some of these issues. I, I don't think there's, I don't think there's as much conflict as we might look for down the road. The gatekeeper has taken the information. I don't think we're going to say to him, you know, that he's got the right to modify and change, you know, something that somebody gives him. But if there's, if there's a question, I still think it's the town website. And if it's whether or not something should be there, maybe we're going to be the arbiters for that issue as a town council. It's the town's website. You know, we are the elected body, you know, to represent the town. Maybe Wilma have to make the decision if Jim thinks something, you know, doesn't belong there and an elected official feels it does. I mean, I don't know how we're going to handle it.
Has there been any conflict?
No, I don't, not none that I know of. I'm brought to my attention.
Yeah, and again, I'm trying to get ahead of the issue.
I'll entertain a motion to put this on the workshop agenda for the 30th of March. We have a motion and a second to put this on the agenda for the workshop on the 30th. Any further discussion? See none of those in favor.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Leonard.
This is one of these projects having to do with the comprehensive plan. It's been a long, long, long time, and I'm curious to know when we're going to have the state's approval so we can start moving ahead, because it's been years since we, three years.
Well, yeah.
Well, it's been, it's been a back and forth with the state on a number of issues. As you know, this, the comprehensive plan goes to the state, then it gets reviewed by a number of other state agencies, then that comes back to us for comments. We went through that, a number of comments and suggestions were incorporated into that, given back to the state, and so it's been a back and forth on that. Part of the problem was that a lot of the comments that were coming back from the state and different agencies weren't really tagged to what state agencies, and I didn't have the full background of what the questions were and what the information was that they were actually looking for. So the latest, I submitted a report to them at the end of November, which I had hoped would be the final, and they, I got, got word back at the end of December that all the changes they were satisfied were with. They had a few other little things that they wanted to have us incorporate, but they didn't feel that we needed to go back to them first. So I think at this point, it's ready to, I think probably the best plan of action would be to go to the planning board for an advisory on some of these changes and then come back to the council for approval. So I do have the documents here if you want.
I, for one, would be interested to know what's, what's dragging it out.
Yeah, well, I, one of the biggest issues from the state's perspective was, was the issue of density and the urban services boundary. And that, that, in a nutshell, is looking at how Tiverton had done a lot of the zoning changes, and in the north end in particular, where you have a lot of building constraints, but you have a lot of parcels that are fully developed, probably 80%. And of those 80%, probably 90% don't meet the current zoning. And before it was changed from R15 to R30, there was probably 60 or 70% that didn't even meet that. So those are some of the questions they had, and they want to know how we're going to move beyond that and how we're going to take a look at that. And so I've outlined those steps that I think are appropriate and prudent, given both planning and using the tools of GIS to be able to look at that on a parcel-by-parcel basis and actually do the zoning based on what's really there.
You know, we approved, you could have left the council for a term of two years and come back and nothing has changed. We approved it in September of 2006 and sent it to the state. Okay, so it's, two and a half years have roughly passed. We're under a state law to update it every five years. By the time we implement this comprehensive plan.
Well, the, the update doesn't take place until the state's given final approval. The state is also looking at completely overhauling the way they do the comprehensive plan and going to a 10-year update and looking at doing just some small minor adjustments in the interim years.
So you're telling us how five years isn't going to kick in or fill?
The clock does not start yet.
The clock doesn't start until they approve.
Once the state approves this final document, then that's when, that's when five years, and likely it's going to be a 10-year at that point, so.
But you know, that's not the law. I mean, the law is not 10 years.
No, what I'm saying is, but the clock does not start.
I don't see any legislation in the General Assembly to change it to 10 years either. I mean, Randy's around, where is he? He would know. But it is, it is something that.
Well, they're doing, they're doing a comprehensive review of the whole process as well as the zone, the, the way it works right now.
That's okay for them, but.
Well, what I'm saying is that.
That's what we need to do.
Right, but I'm saying that the, the five, let's forget about the 10 years for now. The five years will not start until this is given the final approval from the state.
That's good, so, but we still need to get on with it.
Well, it was declared for how many years? It was overdue by, I think, three, maybe five years? Anyway.
Irregardless, irregardless of this, we do have to get this one approved. Now, there were some issues. Have we satisfied, you know, their concerns with North Tiverton?
Yeah, I, I think so. I've got a letter here saying that. They, they wanted a few other things added to the goals to take care of that, but that was the bulk of it.
So that's going to be, that's basically a goal to take a look at zoning at Tiverton?
Yeah, and I'm objective to look at that and how to use the GIS and to look at how we're going to incorporate that, as well as looking at some of the larger undeveloped parcels in North Tiverton and whether that's going to be incorporated into a transfer development rights program to reduce density or reduce development in some of the other areas. So, do you want me?
So do we want copies of this?
Well, yes.
Well, I mean, he's going to go back before the planning board with some recommendations. I just don't want us to get a document, get another document two weeks after he, or three weeks when he goes to the planning board.
If you'd prefer, I'll give this to the planning board first and then come back.
Well, I mean.
I mean, I don't know what the changes are. You're welcome to have this right now. I would like to see.
Pass out, pass out your copies of this document, and maybe we can get by with a few changes in pages rather than a whole other document.
Or another tree.
Yeah. When you make changes, just send us the pages, it's only going to clip on.
Yeah, yeah.
This is just the supplement since.
2006, I think. We'll have to buy a book for the weekend.
Movie.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Town, town administrator announcements, comments, and questions?
The first announcement is that we currently have dumpsters at the landfill for both e-waste and TVs. And there will no longer be a charge if you bring your e-waste or your TV to the landfill. Additionally, the Budget Committee would like to know, they would like to meet with the council on Thursday, March the 5th. If, if this is okay for you, you can let me know and I will get back to the Budget Committee.
I, I probably could be out of town.
Well, you can check your calendars and if you.
If I may, if, if the entire council isn't going to be here, then I feel that it should be at a time when the entire council is available.
No, I'm just saying, I think that it's such an important issue that, that everyone should be here.
As it stands right now, I'll be out of town.
Okay. And do we have a nature of what they, what they want to meet with us?
No, they haven't, they haven't indicated.
Anybody in town with the following week, what, the 12th, seven days from then, 12th?
Much.
No, no, I, I think we've got to use that as the, as a guideline of just, you know, I want to.
The only thing is, we do have to get it done.
Yeah, I want to meet with them as quick as we can, but I do have a commitment on the 5th, but I cannot.
Is March the 12th okay?
No, Cecil's not there yet.
Couldn't we meet on a Monday night, which is usually when we're most successful in having an entire council, but not on Thursday?
Well, their meetings are on Thursday. I think that's all they've been looking for, us to be at one of their meetings. And if it ain't the 12th, then we have trouble with the 19th.
Yes, I won't be here.
I won't be here either.
Well, that's, that's, we all, we're all tasked to be here on Mondays.
You know, the, the point, the point is, if the entire council's here, so, you know, I mean, I, I would love to be there. I, I'm not available. If six of the seven members are available on the 5th, I think you should meet with them. I, you know, I don't want to see something, I don't want to see something, I'm, I'm just saying.
No, but I mean, I mean, maybe, just one on the.
No, actually, I'm not, because I'm leaving for Arizona on Thursday.
On the, on the 5th?
On the 5th.
On the 5th, so there's two. The 12th is one. Anybody else on the 12th? You know, maybe, maybe we should do it on, Cecil, maybe we can call you in or.
I can, I can be readily available by myself.
I mean, you know.
Put you on speaker.
I, I just, you know, I don't.
Violation of the open meeting law.
I knew that.
I, I think it's imperative we meet with them as soon as we can, but like I say, it should be with, you know, the majority, you know.
And I don't have any problem with that.
And we want to do the 12th.
Yep.
I'll contact them and I will see what they, what they'd like to discuss, and I would get that out to you.
This is a wonderful thing.
We know it'll be about the budget.
Yeah. But what specifically, I think Jim might hear is that. Nail it down more specifically.
I don't have any other announcements.
Thank you. Council announcement, comments, and questions? We have Council Rogers and Lampard updating 2009, 2010 budget. Okay, again, Jim, I see that we have the updated budget, but again, I'm sure you still are pursuing areas that we can make cuts for this fiscal year. This is not, this is next year's. I, I had asked, I had asked Jim to get us, you know, the numbers he had and get it to us so that we could at least take a vote to approve a budget. There are going to be changes to the budget, but in all technicality, we should have had a budget to the Budget Committee, an approved budget by the council. And we can send them a couple letters that says that we're still working on cuts, but this is our approved budget. So these are the latest numbers that I think Jim has had in, in all of the conversations and discussions with the departments. And I had asked him to prepare this document so we could vote to send a budget to the, to the Budget Committee, a one that's at least, because technically it says an approved budget.
Yeah, that, that's my concern, saying it's an approved budget. If you want to use that language, I hope there's some definition in that transmission that makes it clear. that makes it clear, at least at this point, or at least my position is, this is not an approved budget for me. And I say it's not an approved budget, and Jim, it's not meant as any criticism, but it's only because I'm looking at the budget, and I know we've worked hard on these numbers. You've certainly worked hard on them. But it doesn't tell me, you know, if I'm a taxpayer, what I'd like to look at is not only what we're spending. I'd like to know what the revenue is, what the proposed revenue is, even if it's only a guess. I'd like to know what the difference is between what we're spending and what we're getting in. And I'd like to have some rough idea as to what impact that might have on my taxes. I mean, that's what I'm thinking of if I'm a taxpayer. And I look at this, and, you know, I want to be very careful. If this is sent over to the Budget Committee, to make sure someone doesn't come back at a later date and say, "Well, you approved all of this spending, and that's the reason we have a 12% to 13% tax rate increase this year." Whatever you transmit over there, make sure there's enough wiggle room for a clear understanding that this does not represent the final statement from the Town Council, that this is still a work in progress. I don't care what type of qualifying language you use, but I'm just not satisfied in using a word like "approved," quote unquote, unless I finally know what the bottom line is and I can tell people who call me up or see me at the 7-Eleven or see me in a restaurant and say what's going to happen to our taxes this year, and I can give them some sort of honest response.
Well, I think we're obligated under the Charter to provide a budget that we've at least -- I think we sent a cover letter last year, and it basically says the same thing. We reserve the right to revise any numbers that appear in this document, but we have an obligation to take the numbers we currently have at a period of time. We're still working on numbers, as the Budget Committee is. And that cover letter should say that. We reserve the right to revise any numbers within the document, but under the Charter, we have to send you -- because I think what I'm hearing is the Budget Committee keeps saying that they don't have a document to work from. That's an approved document of the council. And so I think that that's where they're having some problems, of saying, "Well, what numbers are we working with?" If you're still working with the numbers, we're still working with the numbers. And I think in trying to just, you know, we have to send them something that says we're comfortable with these numbers. We're working on revisions to them constantly as information comes in. We may have to reduce numbers because, as you say, our revenue source may show that we can't support that number without -- because I think these numbers are basically supporting a level-funded, you know, budget.
Actually, it's a...
And I agree with you completely. I just want to make sure that we're not sending out a message to anybody that this is what it is and this is what we're going to spend next year.
No, it's not carbon dioxide, no way.
Jay, but hold on just a second. You're using some figures that you've just heard from the Budget Committee.
No, no, I'm not.
Yes, you are.
You want to know the first time I ever heard the number 12 to 13% was when I was running for office. And I would get phone call after phone call saying, "We just want to warn you that what you're going into. We want to tell you what the budget is going to be for next year, and we want to tell you that we're talking about a budget that could approach 15%." That's the first time I heard the 12 to 13% numbers. I'm not listening to the Budget Committee on an issue like this.
No, but the numbers are not careful.
But I think it's important, even if we don't like the style of the messenger, don't ignore the substance. And there's been a concern in this town now for months, if not going back a year, as to where we were going with this budget for the next fiscal year. And the financial meltdown that we've had in this state has just made the thing far worse and has a lot more concern, as I'm sure you know from talking to people, a lot more concern in the community. The bottom line is, I certainly hope the Budget Committee is absolutely wrong in their preliminary numbers, because this town and the people in this town couldn't possibly afford a 12 to 13% tax rate increase. That's why I want to make it clear that what we're sending over there are not the final numbers. I don't want to frighten people in Tiverton who are going to be thinking, "Well, now they've adopted the numbers of the Budget Committee, and we're stuck with a 12 to 13% tax rate increase." That's what I'm concerned about.
We're not responsible for it. This level budget, which we've all been through, is probably going in for two years now.
Yeah.
We've had a level funded -- this represents probably a 7% decrease from last year. CPI, it's like 73,000 right now more, and 73,000 from last year. Given the costs of fuel, electricity, and all the other utilities, it provides no increases It keeps -- we have reduced some things that we probably, in a capital responsible budget...
Wouldn't have reduced.
We should not reduce. And in fact, you could make the argument that it's a little too low.
Well, I think a lot of people are going to make the argument that it's a too lean a budget, and we're going to have a lot of problems with the budget. You know, I think the premise that has to be started from is, you really have to look at, you know, say what you want about collective bargaining agreements, say what you want about trying to cut personnel. I mean, when you have contractual obligations, you have to put that number in there, and that's a pretty solid number you have to have in there. Now, yeah, we're going to enter into negotiations, let's say, starting in June for next year's budget. I can't trim a budget based on what I would like to see happen in negotiation. If I could do that, this would be a wonderful place, because, I mean, we could just, okay, this is all we got, this is what they're going to get, and that's the end of it. And that's not going to happen that way, because we may say, and we may be able legitimately show how we really can't afford to do something, and somebody else is looking at it from another standpoint, because two of the four unions we're going to negotiate have binding arbitration. So something's going to be set by not by two parties getting together and negotiating. And to think, you know, I think people have to look at what's happening in East Providence. That's a year away from finding out if what the school committee did in East Providence is going to stand the test of the Labor Relations Board and then the courts again. And you know what? If you follow their footsteps and they're determined to be the wrong path, we could be in that same turmoil of owing a lot of people a lot of money that we don't have, and it creates a bigger dilemma down the road. So I would rather be a little bit more conservative in what I do and make sure it doesn't come back and bite me, because it's easier to have the money left and put it back should the results we want happen.
And I want to make it clear that I'm in no way critical of the work that Mr. Goncalo has done, and I agree completely with your comments and the comments of Ms. Durfee. But it still comes down to the bottom line for an average taxpayer, and that is, when all is said and done, here's what I paid last year and what am I going to pay this year?
And I agree with you.
And I have no doubt at all that there are people here in Tiverton -- and I'm not trying to make a political speech, I'm trying to be honest about it. There are people here in Tiverton who, based on what we finally decide is their tax rate and their taxes, are going to determine whether they're going to eat, whether they're going to have heat, whether they're going to pay for their medicine this month.
It's happening now.
And we know we've pushed people out of Tiverton. But I -- and I want to make it clear, I'm not critical, but I think we have to be very, very careful.
I think those decisions are happening right now in the public election.
Yeah, but I -- go ahead, Cecil.
There's a -- you know, I've had conversations with a lot of people, and there's absolutely there is a lot of concern. But one of the things that we don't really have a very, very good measurement of is, what service level do the majority of people really want? It's fine, and I have -- I try to go through this little routine, usually not successful because they don't want to hear it, but they say, "Well, taxes are too high." And I'll say, "Well, okay, well, then, should we cut?" And then I go through the list, fire police, et cetera. And as I go through that list, the answer is always, "Oh, no, don't cut the fire department. I may need the rescue." "Oh, no, don't cut the police. We'll have high crime," and so on and so forth. So I don't know how to do that. You know, I've told people, "You ought not to vote for me, because I don't know how to cut the budget when you want to maintain service levels." And the truth of the matter is, I really don't know on a broad basis what people do want. I have anecdotes and et cetera, but it's up to us to make our best judgment. And I frankly join in the side that I'm beginning to worry that we're slashing things too much. And I don't know the answer, but I'm beginning to worry.
I think...
And I don't, by the way, don't disagree with any of the comments you've made. I'm just absolutely convinced that we may have to go after some of these numbers again.
We will have to go after some of these numbers again.
And that's why I want to make it clear that this is not, in the sense what I would normally define as something that's quote-unquote "approved." I mean, this is still clearly a work in progress, and let's not frighten people out there in Tiverton.
I'm not trying to frighten everybody. I'm trying to be -- I'm trying to make sure we are in compliance with a Charter that says we submit a budget to the Budget Committee so many days. We're already late on that process.
I know, I know.
Okay?
I agree.
So rather than get into this contest of what it is, I mean, it's -- we've always said to them it's a working document. We've done it in the past and said the same thing. We're going to put a stamp of approval as of today. This is the information we have. This is a budget we're sending to you. We will continue to work on these numbers, as you will, you know? And if we see something that can be revised, we will make the necessary revisions. And that's going to be a cover letter saying that we're approving this as of today, and we will get back to you if we see changes that need to be made. And I think that that's -- it's kind of a way to say we're still working on something, and it's not pushing somebody to say, "I can't do my job because you haven't done yours." And that's what we're going to get into if we don't give them a document that at least has what's considered to be an approval of this body.
And I agree. I agree.
You know, one of the things that I think we're going to face, and I have floated this as a trial balloon, but we're all working with information that is not accurate. And we're not going to have information -- Senator Phelag advised us at our workshop, "You're not going to have the information by May." All of which raises the question in my mind, why shouldn't we get the best possible information on revenues that we can possibly have? And that means recessing the financial town meeting to a date certain. And I've also said, as a trial balloon, we cannot do that without the approval of the Budget Committee, the TCC people, the school committee, and the council as one block, because it won't work if we go to a meeting and somebody says, "You're not going to recess this. I'm going to cut your budget." And you know, the thing that I wrestle with, sitting here as a council member, is something that Cecil just mentioned, and that is, we can cut the living bejesus out of the fire department if we wish. And then we can say to people, "We're only going to service alternate streets or on even numbered days. So if you have a heart attack and you're on the wrong street, it's going to be a 20- or 30-minute delay if you get there at all." I don't want to have that on my conscience. To me, that's having blood on your hands. And no matter what I do as a councilperson, that is something that's going to be in the back of my mind. But I must say, I think we don't have the information that we need. We don't know if some revenue sharing will be restored, and we're all wrestling with these issues, and our information is not in any way accurate.
Yeah. I want to take it from the information we have, but Mr. Carter...
I agree. And this, you know, as a taxpayer now...
Please state your name and address.
Chris Carter, 52 hours. I haven't done that in a long time. Having been on the Budget Committee for a long time, I think what you've done as a council, and the same with the school board, is completely appropriate. You've provided a document for the Budget Committee to work with. It's something historically we have always done. The numbers will always change. Jim will have something come in in mid-April, like Blue Cross might come in with a different rate. The Budget Committee has to be somewhat fluid in what they're doing, and I'm sure that they will be when they meet with you. I came up to the podium for a couple of reasons. One is this expectation of, you know, where the tax rate's going to raise. You've got a compounding issue this year, again, that you don't really, you know, nobody's really thought of. It's revale. Some people, you know, you don't look at the bottom line of the levy to see whether or not it's within the range that you want, but you're going to have some very disparate tax increases on certain segments of the population and residents this year because of revale. It's not going to be equal, and you're going to have to factor that into the issue as well. And it's just another one of those issues you're going to have to deal with.
Well, people are -- right. I think that people have to be made aware very early that with the revale, and there has been a reduction in property value...
In some areas.
They will see a tax rate that is substantially higher than the tax rate that they're seeing today, but when they look at the end number, it will probably be equal or somewhat, and there'll be some fluctuation in that. But that's something that's going to -- we have to make sure, and we'll have the assessor in here, and I'm sure he's going to run some seminars, you know, prior to people getting a tax bill to let them know that, because that's a major issue.
But the second, more important issue, and Louise hit on it. In my office today, I received a package from the state legislature about the stimulus package. The money is all over the lot. And if the town is going to receive any money, whether it be through Article I on education, whether it be additional educational funding, or whether it be for housing aid for the construction of the schools, or other places where that funding may find its way through the revenue stream of this year, you're actually trying to put something together. And I think the Budget Committee should do its due diligence, as it's always done, to come up with the numbers that are prudent and open the door to leave some leeway if we don't know the information, because the legislature probably won't act on it until mid-June, late June, that you may have to instruct Jim to look at the process of going through of extending the time to have the meeting. And it's something you shouldn't have to do every year, but this is an extenuating year. And I agree with everything that Javol said, but I think you really need to put some caution to the wind and say, "What's in the best interests of all the taxpayers in this town?" and do the right process on their behalf.
I think we're off the point, though, that's being made, and that is whether we should forward a budget that we're going to say is approved. I agree with Mr. Lambert that we need to make it clear that by approval, we don't mean this is our last word on it. It has to be clear that it's not the last word of the council.
It may go up.
In my opinion. Well, again, you know, what everyone has said, you know, Mr. Lambert and Mr. Baldwin and Ms. Durfee, you know, the bottom line is, we know that this is not going to be the final budget, you know? And according to the Charter, we have to submit a budget to the Budget Committee.
We're already late then.
I know.
We are.
But again, we're putting ourselves in a deeper position by not getting them a document, because the longer we go, the less time we have to make any significant changes in this budget. And I understand what Mr. Lambert is saying, and I too am worried about what's going to happen in this town, you know, as far as the tax rate is concerned and another taxpayers' revolt and so forth and so on. But again, bottom line is, I believe this council is trying to do its best for all the taxpayers in town and to maintain the services that it desperately needed by everybody in town. And a number has to be given as a starting point, and that's what this budget is. It's not a finalized number. It's a starting point. And I think that's what we need to convey to the Budget Committee, that this is the starting point. And as Mr. Goncalo knows, there's going to be changes made up until probably the day before the fiscal year begins on what the budget will be, and after that, there may have to be supplemental budgets because of the changes and the way the revenue flow may be. But we have to get something. We have to have a starting point. And by doing nothing, we're going to actually create a bigger problem. So we have to send a document to them as a starting point. We send them a document as a starting point, and I think I'm hearing that there's complaints that it isn't. They're not seeing that as approved. And I think that they're the ones who I think are dictating, I know, to -- or having an impact on me to say, "I don't want them accusing us of not trying to cooperate and give them the document that they feel is necessary to move on with what they're doing." So if an approval of a document means that, and I have no problem...
I have no problem forwarding this to the Budget Committee, but I have to tell you, they've already worked on the town budget. They have taken their deductions. That hasn't stopped them at all. They have a flat 16.5% reduction on municipal services. They have a proposed $2 million cut, $2 million cut on municipal services. So, but let's send it along. I'm sure there'll be another time for discussion on this. So I'll make a motion that we forward this to the...
With the appropriate cover letter.
Sure. Absolutely.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I would like to know what that motion means. We're going to send it over with the appropriate, what?
A cover letter stating that this is, we're sending this as approved at this time by the council with the right to make recommended changes as the numbers come in, and basically saying it's not fixed in stone.
Okay.
I, I think that, you know, this is, this is a pretty tight budget. As, as people have said, this is level-funded, going to be the second year. We've already absorbed two years' worth of increases, okay? It's, what's stated here is a $53,000 increase over the previous year for the municipal budget. And quite frankly, I do have some concerns. It's not going to be an easy budget to manage. I mean, if you, we, we revised our utility costs, and at this point, I'm wondering if we didn't revise them too low.
Too low.
Okay? So I'm, I'm skeptical about the utilities in this budget, but out of all the years that I've, I've dealt with these budgets, I've never seen where the council has approved a budget and it's gone to the Budget Committee, and the Budget Committee has come back and said, "Oh, no, you can't change it. You can always change it. You can always change it." And as far as some of the information, I mean, I think we're all concerned about what is the tax rate going to be, but there's, the only thing we can try to put forth at this point and give the Budget Committee something to work with is, is this document. Revenue, yeah, we're, we're ready to go forward with revenue, but we'd like to have some input from the state, rather than guess whether, you know, do we put in revenue sharing or do we not? Do we put half the amount or some guidance from the state? The, the revised numbers for the tax base are not ready yet. So this traditionally always comes together at the end, and, and that's when everybody's running frantic, and they really see what the numbers are to, to, if they're not satisfied, what are we going to do? So...
Over the years, we've had endless meetings with the Budget Committee until the thing goes to print, and, uh, nothing has ever been in, in stone or in concrete. It's always been a good faith effort to...
Can I say that we should not be looking to North Tivitan for an example, or North Providence for an example? We should be looking at, at the city of Warwick for an example this, this time around.
With the cooperative spirit that's gotten to the point they're at?
I think there's a...
Cooperative spirit out there.
There is a motion on the...
Motion and seconded.
Yep.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Okay.
Was that a grown head of them?
Jim was listening to the conversation rather intently, and I was going, trying to interrupt him, and he didn't want to be interrupted, and I don't blame him. I like to know what time of the day he is best, most available. Is there a time during the day that I'd like to come in and talk to you about the budget? Is there a good time of the day? Bad time of the day?
5:30 a.m.
Anytime, just call, make sure that...
I'll, I'll make a motion that...
Townseler, sir?
Woo!
Announcements or comments?
What is beard?
Just by the way, of a public update on the, the Corvello versus New England Gas, the bid streak case, that has been scheduled for mediation on Friday, March 6th, before Magistrate Judge Almond. There was a status conference with Judge Smith, and he does have the power to order parties to go to mediation, and I, I can't talk about any of the details of what was discussed there, but he did order this mediation. It was originally going to be scheduled for this week, but various parties... So Friday, March 6th is when that's going to be. That's all I've got at this point.
Magistrate Lincoln?
Before magistrate...
That's my time.
Yes, who's the former governor's son. He's the federal magistrate judge that, in the federal court system, the magistrate judges do most of the in-house mediation.
Okay. I will move that we go into executive session pursuant to 4246-5 subsection A5.
Second. Motion being seconded, all those in favor?
And remain in executive session pursuant to 4246-5A6.
Second.
All those in favor?
And continue in executive session pursuant to 4246-5A2.
Second. All those in favor?
And stay there endlessly at 4246-5A2.
All those in favor? We're now in executive session.
Okay, so that goes in a different file.